So, welcome all our partners from DOT. Again, Town of Enfield welcomes you. We're looking forward to a nice, robust conversation. And I will turn it over to our town manager, Christopher Bronson. Again, welcome, everyone. My name is Mike Lordrick. I'm the mayor, and we look forward to our discussion tonight.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we have Deputy Commissioner Garrett Ucalito, who I've had the pleasure to speak with and text back and forth with a little bit and some of our friends. I see Robert Andruski is on and John Burnick, and they're our good partners on the rail station we're working towards in Thompsonville. So, it's good to see the gang back together again. One day, one of these days soon, Garrett, we'll all be together in person. But it's nice to have this technology. So, I know you folks are very busy, so it's nice that you're able to zoom in from, you know, the comfort of your home and still accommodate us and our citizens. By way of background, I will just share with the council, we've had a great deal of interest in this subject. It's the rail to trail and also the freight line on the other part of town across from where we want to have our new rail station. I just think it's fascinating. If you'd gone back a few years, who would have thought there'd be so much discussion and renewal of rail in Enfield and in Connecticut and in the nation? It's really quite remarkable.
Is now joining.
So, I think it's a good thing on so many different levels. This is going to be a good discussion. We've had a lot of interest. We had an open enrollment, if you will, period where a lot of questions came from the council and citizens that we forwarded on to Garrett. And also, I've told them previously, Garrett, that due to the volume and complexity of the questions, they wouldn't be answered this evening, that DOT staff would get to them in order and get back to us at a later date. But it gave Garrett and his team the flavor of the conversation of what we're interested in. So, I don't want to take up any more time. With that, I'll turn it over to DOT for their presentation and then for, you know, some follow-up questions by the council on the subject. So, welcome, everybody, and the floor is yours, Garrett.
Thank you, and thank you for having us. Appreciate the interest in this topic. So, my name is Garrett Ucalito. I'm the deputy commissioner at the Connecticut Department of Transportation, joined by a whole host of our team members who work in the Rails Office of the Bureau of Public Transportation. So, we have Rich Andreski, who's the bureau chief for public transportation. We also have John Burnick, who leads our capital program for rails. Yuri Kolges, who leads the operations side of rails. Julie Thomas, who is the wizard of all things leases for our team at the DOT Rails Office and agreements. And we also have Steve Curley, who's in charge of all safety issues for rail in Connecticut. So, what we do, what we're planning to do is just go through a really brief presentation, which will address some of those questions that phrase question and answer with the council, if that's okay with you.
Is now exiting.
Sounds great. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yuri, if you can go to the next slide. So, the topics we're going to cover today, introductions, and then we'll have a discussion from John Burnick to explain what the current existing system is, the operations and the infrastructure. Julie will walk through the process for requesting state property for trail use and talk about what those next steps would be, and then open up for questions. So, really briefly for introduction, so I'll turn it over to Rich Andreski. I know this is an issue that lots of communities focus on, is how we can utilize a freight line that's running through our community. And, you know, there are lots of different levels involved in this discussion. It's not just a state issue. If you think back to the founding of our country, there's different layers of infrastructure as they exist, and waterways are the most protected and grandfathered form of transportation in our country. To try and build a bridge over a waterway or that you can't navigate through is going to have to take an act of Congress to change that. Then, the next oldest level is a railroad. They came before the roads did, and so they have grandfather rights over our roadways. Then, lastly, came the highways and the roadways. So, it's difficult to think about rails existing before our roads, but they did in many instances. And that's why there's a federal program, a federal body called the Surface Transportation Board, which exists to oversee all things freight rail and rail infrastructure. So, John and Julie will talk a little bit about that as well. But I'll turn it over to Rich to talk about, to give introductions as well.
Thank you, Garrett. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. My remarks are going to be brief. I just wanted to let you know that the folks you have here on this Microsoft Teams meeting are the key people at DOT that have a role in overseeing the operation management and development of our freight rail system. So, this team is the team of folks that will need to provide any technical feedback. There is a deliberate approach that needs to be taken here. Garrett mentioned the Surface Transportation Board. Even limited freight rail service, which we'll hear about on this line, even if that is very limited in nature and scope, it is protected as interstate commerce. So, there is a rigorous process that needs to be followed to consider alternative uses of a rail corridor. So, you'll hear about that. We're open to answering any questions following the presentation. But I'm going to hand it off to Yuri Kolges. Yuri, you want to kick off the presentation?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So, the first part, as Garrett mentioned, would be talking about the existing system, operations and infrastructure. So, John Burnick, are you on? So, we'll be covering that first part. Thank you.
Yep, I'm here. Hi. So, just very briefly, you touched the points on the slide here. The rail line, we, it's commonly known as the East Long Meadows Secondary. Central New England Railroad is the operator across that territory. For most of the minor maintenance, including the majority of the track work, we rely on the freight operators to accomplish that, and that's the terms of the lease that we have with them. We do inspect the bridges. The bridges are inspected visually yearly, and they have load ratings done on them every three years. And any major maintenance that would be on, be beyond the capability of the freight operator to handle would fall upon Connecticut DOT as part of our, and we would fit that into our capital program based on priority. A good example is we recently replaced four bridges on the Hoosier Tonic Line. We have a number of bridges that we're doing in Waterbury that's on freight-only territory and Pan Am territory. So, as I said, the maintenance of waywork, the carriers are generally responsible for maintaining the track structure, the grid crossing, and any minor bridge repairs. When we do the bridge inspections, they generally generate some discrepancies. We issue those as what we call maintenance repair memorandums, and then we monitor that the freight operator actually goes out there and accomplishes them. And once again, if our inspection identifies a structure that is in serious condition, we look to prioritize that on our five-year capital program. And we generally have a good lead time on that since we're inspecting yearly. The yearly inspections are a part of an FRA, Federal Railroad Administration mandated and approved, bridge maintenance program. And that's true not only of the freight territory, but of the passenger territory, too. So, these bridges are inspected the same as we would inspect on our on-system, passenger system, the New Haven Main Line and others.
So, John, one thing, I know questions came in about, you know, how much we subsidize the operation of these freight rail systems. So, can you talk a little bit about how much funding we pay or how much state funding goes into the freight lines for either operations or capital? Just to clarify that question?
On the operations side, I defer to Yuri and Julie on that. But on the capital side, unless there's something that shows up on our five-year capital program, they're not subsidized. What we do, we do support them in providing them scrap materials that come off the main line. Generally, the mainline rail that we use on the passenger service, the New Haven Main Line, is fairly heavy rail. And so, once it wears to the point where we don't want to use it for high-speed passenger traffic anymore, it's still very suitable for lower-speed freight traffic. And so, there's a Connecticut statute that mandates that we offer that material to the freight companies, and so we do provide that to them, and they take it and use it. But they do all the labor for most of the, for the vast majority of the work, unless, like I say, there's a, a bridge replacement or major bridge rehabilitation required, in which case Connecticut DOT, as the owner, takes that, and we do that project with, generally, it's state funding.
Yep. Thanks. And Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but our agreements don't provide a subsidy for operations. In fact, it's the inverse, where the operator will provide the DOT with a portion of their revenues from the operation?
That's correct. It's 2% revenues deposited in funds, and then that is used for projects.
So, the next topic to cover is specifically how to do a rails to trail conversion, and part of that would be a request coming in to use state property for that trail use. So, Julie's going to walk us through that.
Excuse me, but Paul, perhaps you should let Julie know that she's not really coming through. I don't know. Is it her end, our end? Can we reconnect her? It's just that it's garbled. I don't think anybody can hear what she's saying. At least, I can't.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, if you can move maybe a little closer to the mic source.
I'll give it another shot. Hopefully, you can hear me. If not, we'll try it another way.
I think we can hear you now, Julie. Thank you.
Okay. As I was stating, the first step is a submittal to the department, the rail administrator, Yurty Jankovic, from the municipality requesting use of state railroad violation for its rail process. And included in that should be just a very basic conceptual trail design. That would include just the preliminary layout and the points of any access to the railroad violation. The east winds of secondary line starts at Torrey Road in South Lenoir and extends all the way to the Connecticut Mass line. So, in that preliminary layout, we would expect to see at least the streets where the beginning and end points are of the trail. And then, step two would be we would reach out to the point of contact at the municipality and start information sharing. The first step really is, it's going to need the state's railroad valuation mapping, which are the old surveys that show the width of the rail corridor all the way along the line. It's not going to show topography. It will show freight crossings, and it will show some sort of lights that a bow would have. But it is just, it's an old historic valuation map, and the town would have to have an engineer verify information on that mapping and locate the railroad crossings, turnout yards. Various topography that might prove to be an impediment to a trail and any sightline impediment should be on that next step. We're going to look at safety considerations. We have a member from our rail regulatory here, Steve Colley, who's probably going to get in to do a little bit about later, we see the carsony. But for various locations along the route, we might need protective barriers, various safety improvements, especially if they are at-grade pedestrian crossings. We're going to look at existing operations on the line, any potential to fix the in-pigs operation. That's going to be based on the front line and magnitude of planning movements on the line, and also any potential interest in the line. We're also going to be looking at the legal and the, what I'd be mighty legal is, I mean, the real estate interests that exist there. Currently, you know, boughs have rights along the line. Those have to be resourced in the land records. We would expect the town to provide a title search and the data to the department of something that the department doesn't have available to us at this point in time. So, the municipality would have to provide that. We would offer all of the information we have concerning existing utility agreements along the line and share that with the municipality or consultant, and our, any plans for future licensing plus. Right now, there's one for Solar Farm that's well in progress that may be impacted from a potential trail. And then, we have going to contact the other sports along the line as well. So, we could provide that information. Other considerations, which we mentioned before, are the Surface Sanification Board considerations. The Surface Sanification Board has jurisdictions, as we indicated, of all freight rail practice, service issues, rail structure, construction, line sale, line construction, line of the enemy. It's going to be designed dependent upon whether or not, what filings would need to be made to the Surface Transportation Board, whether it's going to be a dual use, a request for public use, such as for trail exemption, et cetera. All that is going to be designed depending. It's impossible to know right now what types of SDD filings would need to be contemplated until how to design from the municipality. Step three, now, once you, once you've been working with us and we've shared information, you're going to go into full-blown design development. Typically, the municipality will hire a consultant, and then we would be working with you step by step for the design process. We would submit a design, orange views would review it. We would provide instant permitting agreements that the municipality, which the consultant would need in order to do some of your engineering activities, such as survey, any kind of line work, environmental setting work, that sort of thing. And then, mine would work with you to develop the actual.
We lost your sound again? There we go. A little better.
I don't. Again, my office would work with you with local municipalities for trail. Tom, Tom, Hampton, we'll work with Watertown and Tomson. Right now, we're studying for a trail on a railbank line affair. So, we would be more than happy to work with you once you get to that point in the process if we determine that a trail is feasible within the board.
Yuri, can you go to the next slide? So, Julie, did you want to, you talked about the first step.
Right.
Do you want to talk about the second one?
Sure. The department, in light of existing activities, changes our infrastructure statewide, is in the process of hiring a consultant to review the current level of operation on these winds of secondary line, its economic benefits, advantages, disadvantages, for freight service in the region. So, that is a step the department is taking to do a full assessment of the line, if you junction with your request for.
That concludes the presentation. So, we wanted to save most of the time for question and answer with the town council.
Thank you, Commissioner. We will open up the questions. Councilor Mangini goes first.
Thank you for the presentation and for the additional information. Going to the trail question, I see you did identify safety, the protective barriers, which I was very happy to see that addressed. Step three, trail design development, I suspect at some point we'll be looking at parking for people that are choosing, you know, to use the trails. And again, I know this is early on, but I think at some point, parking's going to have to be, you know, addressed for people that want to participate. I just want to make sure at some point, as we get further into this, you'll have the parking issue looked at.
I have a question for Commissioner. I mean, we have, I don't know if we've gotten to the part of design even coming, we have to, we haven't come close to the design part at this point, so, right.
It's premature.
That'd have to be taken into consideration, certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Riley, then Councilor Shroza.
So, going back to step one is what the town submits to the DOT. So, are we like in that phase right now because we're having this meeting, or do we have to like have like a formal ask?
So, Julie can talk, re-go with step one, but like step one would be an actual submittal that's the actual preliminary layout and points of pedestrian access. So, it, there needs to be more work done by the town to submit that to us.
Okay.
Councilor Shroza, then Councilor Sticola.
Thank you, Mr. Ucalito, for being here tonight. I just have a couple of questions. Number one, about a month ago, I asked our Economic Development Director if she felt the ability to provide a rail service for a business could be a significant economic impact for the town to the positive by growing our grand list, and she said it would be huge. I would like to know if you concur with that statement.
So, you know, as the Department of Transportation, we obviously work with all forms of rail, both passenger and freight. We're working to develop and hopefully deliver passenger rail systems for Enfield and Thompsonville. But freight rail is very important in our intermodal system. The opportunity to use freight rail means fewer trucks on our interstate highway system and our secondary roads. So, it is critically important, and there are certain types of uses that are much more conducive to freight rail than for trucking. So, you know, freight rail has significant importance. It is one of the backbones, along with our trucking industry, that keeps us moving. I think there's always a trade-off, though. We've seen other communities where trails have been a big economic driver. If you go to the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail, and you stop in some of those communities that have a trail, the little village centers that popped up with some small businesses around those trailheads are pretty busy in the summer months. So, above freight rail is critical to our nation's economic activity.
Thank you. My second question is, there was a lot of speculation, a lot of discussion about this project a few months ago. We didn't have the information. One of the concerns was that we'd be having to deal with this freight train going through town, nobody knew, two times, three times, four times a day. Since then, the information I have that the actual user right now is planning one train, not a day, per week. So, that's a lot different than two or three a day. We have one user, I think, so far, that's trying to promote a green energy project with a biofuel, which reduces greenhouse gas emissions. Down the road, if there were other users, and I understand there are other businesses that want to sign on, I'm sure DOT, or you can answer that for me, would have regulatory authority over any future uses in terms of what's being transported, how many times, and all that type of thing. Am I correct in that?
Garrett, would Julie need a?
Sure. Richard, check in. So, Rich Andreski here. So, the activity that takes place on the line, the freight company that operates, whether it be the current operator or another future operator, has, by virtue of the agreement with the DOT, the right to serve customers on the line. The DOT would not get in the middle of a rail provider and its relationship with a rail customer, and that, and that relationship is protected by the Interstate Commerce Clause. So, what we would be looking at here, I don't know if that came through in our presentation, would be a co-location of a trail and a, and maintaining the active freight service on the line. As to, as to the frequency and how the Surface Transportation Board might look at a change in use, that's interesting. From my experience, that's, it's very much a, it's not what you would imagine it might be. For example, a line that does not see active freight service, meaning there's no freight, ongoing freight service, is still classified as an active railroad. It's a little counterintuitive, but the Surface Transportation Board process to look at a change in use in the corridor considers not only current customers, but prospective customers that may not exist today. So, while the biofuels company is maybe a near-term customer that would want rail service, the Surface Transportation Board also looks at other potential, potential users, including adjacent land use. So, for example, to the extent there are, that are commercial properties located adjacent to the line, that would be a consideration. There's also a public notice process. So, in, again, in a change in use scenario here, there would be a notice to all potential affected parties, and anyone could come forward and say, yeah, I think in the future, I might need rail service. So, what we're really talking about here is co-location. The regulatory aspects of this are handled by the Federal Railroad Administration. So, the actual regulation of the railroad itself is handled by the federal government, not the Connecticut DOT. I hope that, that was, I hope that covered your comments.
No, that's good. Thank you for that. And I just have one last question. The proposed use right now, so far, like I said, is for a green energy product to reduce greenhouse gas. It's biofuel. And from what I understand, federal standards do not classify that particular product as a hazardous material. Is that your understanding?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilor Sticola and Deputy Mayor Suzak, Councilor Mueller. Let the level get a chance first. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, you may have touched upon this answer when Councilor Shroza asked one of his questions, but is the procedure the same if the town would want to propose just a trail as if we wanted the rail and the trail? Are the steps the same and the process the same?
So, the, so to do just the trail, that would require going to the federal government to do a rail abandonment, which Rich was just discussing, which would require proving to the federal government, to the Surface Transportation Board, that there is no usage or economic viability of that freight line. And then, after that, to use state property, you would have to follow steps in, to interact with the DOT to get access to using our state property that Julie laid out. So, there would be like a pre-step to even getting to the point of designing the trail.
Okay. So, it would be almost, all right, so there'd be a step before step one, and then the rest of it was, is really the same?
Yeah, it'd be a little slimmed down because we wouldn't have to worry about safety considerations because the rail would be abandoned, so, but it'd be, you'd have to go through our rights-of-way process to acquire rights to build within our right-of-way or lease it for 99 years or however long we want to build the trail for.
Okay. And I'm not advocating for one way or the other at this point. And I'm not advocating for one way or the other at this point. I was just curious on if the steps were the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Okay, you stated that, you know, you inspect the bridges periodically. Do you have a date for when the last inspection was on the Scantic River Bridge?
Oh, yeah, I do. Let's see, it was, I think, November 2020. So it was last November.
Okay, it was last November?
Yeah.
Okay. And how did it fare on that inspection?
It's rated overall fair. There are some minor repairs that need to be done, but, you know, the overall condition of the bridge is rated fair, which, you know, for comparison, on our system for the older bridges that we have, that's, that's actually pretty good. You know, we have, you know, we have some older bridges that are actually rated four or less.
Okay. And that doesn't include the piers and the underground foundation system, correct?
Yes, yeah, yeah. The piers were actually reinforced recently. There is some deterioration up on the bridge seats, and that's the subject of one of those repair memorandums that I talked about.
Okay, so I guess, you know, we hear a lot from our residents, why was this railroad, why did it go dormant? And not be used for over 25 years? Is there any insight as to why that, that happened?
I'm going to defer on that one.
So my understa-
Okay.
Well, so my understa-, John or Rich or Julie, correct me if I'm wrong, but a portion of the line is active, right?
Well, I guess a portion that we're talking about has been dormant for about 25 years.
Yeah, and so that would, I mean, it's not due to condition. It would be due to economic factors, I would say, is probably the reason.
So would an analysis be done of the land that is along this, this railroad to see if there, you know, because I guess you would be bringing in raw goods, manufacturing them there, and bringing them out on the train? Because bringing them in on the train and distributing them from a certain point doesn't lower our truck traffic. So I guess, you know, I really, that analysis, I always feel that I'm not fully grasping how it's taking trucks off the road if there's no guarantee that it's raw materials and manufacturing occurs and it's raw material. And I think that's it for my question. Thank you.
Right, but either way, you would, if you, if you didn't bring, if you brought, if you didn't have the rail, you would, you would have to bring the raw materials in by truck. And so to have a manufacturing facility that uses rail, that, that is incentivized by the use of rail, then you would have truck traffic both ways. And this way, you would have truck traffic going either way. Generally, the rail usage is, is, is an incentive for, you know, having a rail line, an active rail line, is an incentive for, for certain businesses to locate in those areas because they require either bulk materials coming in, or they have a lot of materials being shipped out. And so the biofuel is, is a really good example of that, where you have, you know, a tank or car situation, you know, that's very conducive for rail. Other places we've seen, you know, we have Home Depots and those distribution centers that take, you know, the bulk material in and then ship it out to local, local businesses and use it as a distribution point. That's another family.
So it would be more distribution centers coming in along the rail line that would use rail coming in and truck going out?
Or, or both ways. You could have both materials coming in and manufactured goods going out by rail also. It really depends.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Muller? I had a quick question under step three for trail design. We hire the consultant and you guys work with them, or you guys have consultants and we work with them? How does that work exactly?
A municipality preparing and studying for a trail, and its consultant would develop the plan itself. If it's hard to determine, we would, and we would provide any information we have on can, that would be helpful to a consultant. But if the municipality was trying for a trail, so we would look at the building for a trail, okay, time and preliminary layout.
You would review and provide feedback?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Angar?
Greetings. Thank you for your presentation tonight. I have a question. Is there a rule of thumb of the distance between a rail and the trail? And who decides if there's enough room to have both? Would that be the state or the, or the government?
John or Steve, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, we did have, we do have a suggested separation. And Steve, correct, you recall what the number is?
John, I, yeah, this is Steve Curly. Usually what we like to do is keep a distance of 25 minimum from the center line of track, the nearest, is a single track, obviously railroad right away, the whole line. So at a minimum, you're looking usually around 25 feet. And that's because the road still would have to, you know, repair the, the track structure itself, have room to put the scenery, have room to plate the materials when they're, when they are repairing the track. There's also turnouts and sightings, they need room for that. So, yeah, we basically, about 25 feet.
And we do look for some sort of physical separation. It might be a berm, it might be, you know, just sort of the, the natural ditch that the, that the railroad uses to drain the track bed. It might be a fence, depending upon the situation. You know, there tends to be, you know, the downside on these trails is that, you know, there tends to be a degree of complacency. You know, people say, oh, I know, the, the train, train only runs once a week and it comes by on Tuesday and I already saw it. And, and, you know, lo and behold, you know, the operator, you know, has a special shipment and he's coming through on a Thursday. And, and, you know, someone's walking on the track bed, train comes around the corner, even at 25 miles an hour, that train can't stop. And somebody trips, somebody falls, and now you have, you know, you have a problem. And it's just, you know, we, we need to be absolute, we need to treat this just like we would any other rail line and not foster that feeling of complacency.
And so who would decide if there's enough room for both to exist? Would that be a local decision, the state, or the government?
That would be a collaborative discussion between the state and the municipality.
Thank you.
I had a quick, a couple of quick questions. So did this go back out the bid after 25 years of no, of doing no work on, on the rail? Is there a bid process? How is the current leasing selected?
Julie, do you want to make that?
Sure. No, not, this is not going out. I know, because the department, we, we got it in both, we recognize that it's been several fully evaluated this, and that's why we're hiring a consultant, we're hiring a consultant to do that, to look at the availability and to make a lease.
Right, you mentioned earlier that if a business, another business wants to, you take, if the rail opens and they want to take advantage of it, there'd be some sort of public process, yet there was no public process here. And so again, I guess my curiosity is if, if the town didn't start talking about this, would it, would, I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but would the lease been extended for 20 years like it was called prior? Why the extension for a year?
No. In fact, we only intended for a year to allow the department to, to prepare a big law, go out to our-
So are you planning to go out the bid?
Well, we're having a consultant review that, to determine what may be the next stop when we go.
So over the last 25 years, is there, how much taxpayer money, if any, has been used on that line?
I'll take that, very, very, very little. Nothing in the past decade. As we stated in the outset, freight rails are not largely supported by government. They actually pay us.
Right, so I get, but if you have a lease with someone, isn't there a performance part of that lease? I mean, if the rail hasn't opened in 25 years, I mean, didn't the DOT at some point, maybe 15 years in, say, what's going on? Maybe do we look at it? Do we, I mean, is there an out clause of the lease? I mean, you have to understand, I think we're a little bit curious that it's been dormant for so long, the town has some interest in a trail, and all of a sudden, the rail's going to open.
I, I think, character missing, that's maybe, the line hasn't been-
The one we're talking about has. And, and just so you know, East Long Meadow, for example, they're actually, the town mentioned the name of the tra, of the line, they're looking to actually extend their trail down to the Enfield border. So I guess the question is, is, so would the train stop at our border? How does it turn around?
So I think there's, the key, there's, you're talking about a segment of a rail line, right?
Well, we're, we're here talking about Enfield, correct, yep.
Correct. But we leased a longer, that we leased the line, and so one portion of that line is not currently active, but other portions are.
Got it. But again, I guess, you know, for us, we're a little bit frustrated, you know, that our, and, the question was earlier about the, but you mentioned the butters would have, you'd, you'd speak to the butters if you did a trail. Would you, would you speak to the butters if the rail opens as well? Do they have any right, do they have any rights?
The railroad existed and has rights by federal law. The railroad existed, it's overseen by the Surface Transportation Board.
Okay. And just curious, again, not to go back, but on the bridge, has a structural engineer signed off that if that opened tomorrow, it could handle an 80 to 100-ton train? Whether it's one day a week, two days a week, three days a week?
Yeah, that's the purpose of the bridge rate.
Is that, is that, um, is that public information?
I, we can share it.
Okay. I appreciate if you would share it with us. I went out there and inspected it myself. The concrete's cracked on three of the columns, there's rebar showing on all four of the columns. So I'm just curious.
So those, that, those items can be repaired?
Yeah, but I'm asking currently, is it structurally safe? I'm not, I understand it can be repaired. And you mentioned earlier that the capital, some of that money could be taxpayer money used to fix the capital, which again, I would have a problem with if, because again, all of us pay state taxes here. And so again, I'd be a little bit concerned if my tax dollars are used to fix a rail, a fix a rail that we can't have a trail on.
Well, the taxpayer dollars are used for our roadways in Connecticut. So just to clarify.
True, but, and again, and for example, when last time you were coming here to do a project, you actually had a public hearing, and we, we actually voted on it whether we wanted it or not. So I just, I'm just curious why this process is different.
Because this is grandfathered by federal law, interstate commerce. These existed long before roadways existed.
The repairs that I mentioned don't rise to the level of having Connecticut capital involved. It would be on the railroad to make those repairs.
So meaning to, if they were going to open the rail tomorrow, they, could they, could a train come through that bridge and you, and DOT would be happy that it's safe?
We probably want them to do the repairs in advance.
And if by some chance they don't, and it, and it isn't safe and something happened, who has the liability?
If it's not safe, we wouldn't allow it to travel.
Okay.
Counselor Riley?
Okay, so just a couple other questions. Does the Connecticut DOT regulate the hours of travel that a freight line can go? And does it regulate the speed at which the train can travel? What's the maximum speed that the freight train can travel down that particular portion of line in Enfield?
No, that's interstate commerce issues, but Rich can talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, just as the bridges are load-rated, the track is classified for a certain speed. This is, the train speeds and the hours of operation are handled by the carrier in arrangement with the customers. So we do not, we do not get involved with that.
Okay, so it would be not odd if a train came through at midnight if they had people working on the third shift at the plant? They could, yes?
That's correct. We don't have regulatory oversight over them.
Okay. My other question is, so let's say everything happened great, and we had a trail with the rail. What hap, what would happen? Who would be responsible if, let's say, the train derailed or it, the cars leaked their product all over and it flowed into the trail? So the cleanup for that would be solely the responsible of the company and the rail owner? Or would the town have some responsibility since we have a trail there?
Well, you know, part, part of this is how, how the trail, assuming that the trail is feasible to be co-located, and the nature of the lease agreement. Julie, can, can we predict that, or is that all subject to future contract?
If we stop or the names associated with the project, certainly, certainly have a lot of activity. Certain insurances and liability that would be all the issues with the project. I think, you know, I'm simply trying to have that respect.
I can't, I can't hear you, sorry.
Sorry, Julie, it's tough to hear you.
Yeah. My-
So I think, I'll, I'll take a stab at, you know, I think when you, when the, when there's a surface transportation accident, such as a freight derailment, it may rise to the occasion of having the National Transportation Safety Board come out and investigate what caused that, which would then determine liability. Steve, do you want to discuss any of those safety-type issues?
Yeah, so, you know, when any, whenever there's some kind of derailment or something like that, the railroad's required, once again, to report to FRA in a certain amount of time, depending on the amount of property damage or, you know, injury that occurs in FRA will, you know, first thing will happen is that obviously cleanup and getting the train back on the tracks and moving and getting the incident cleaned up is the first thing that happens. Responsibility, usually, the cost of any of that derailment will be the burden of the railroad. Once again, if it's anything really significant, Garrett has mentioned that, you know, other federal safety boards come in to do a more thorough investigation of that. But, you know, I mean, usually what happens is a train, these trains, first thing, are low speed. We're talking about 10 miles an hour or less. The track, you know, in certain fortunes, you guys may be seeing concrete topics there. He's, he's, or the track's getting upgraded to a certain class of track. Nonetheless, he's not going to be able to allow to be going beyond what the agreement says. And the existing agreement has it as a day-to-day operations, no more than Class II track speed.
Yeah, well, I mean, I know derailment's kind of like out there, but, you know, if a train car started leaking, that, you know, could be a more, you know, feasible issue that would happen. And I don't know, like if DEEP would have to come out and bring all their hazmat things to dig up the soil and all that? So who would be, you know, footing the bill for something like that?
Right, so you're, you're exactly right, that if there was any kind of issue with a car that was carrying something that is considered hazardous. You know, Connecticut DEEP would be out there with, with the, obviously, Conda too, but DEEP would take over the situation. They would do the investigation, do the- And DEEP is regulatory agencies that can hand out fines too. So, you know, they're going to find the railroad or the person that owns the rail car. If it was just, you know, the, the car was in poor shape or whatever, and the railroad was just carrying that car, right? It may not be the railroad that actually owns the car. the car. The businesses own the cars. So, you know, that scenario that happens, once again, it's going to be investigated and liability to whoever's at fault.
Yeah. All right. So then my last question is, let's say other businesses in Enfield that were along the line decided, you know, or they moved in and they want to use the line. So is town zoning responsible for making sure that the business has the correct and proper, like, runoff tracks and equipment? Or is that something that's between, you know, like, I don't know, DOT or the federal government or whatever?
So that would largely be between the operator of the railroad and the business.
The town doesn't have any, the town doesn't have any say?
Okay.
Nope. I just had two final questions, and then I'll get to Deputy Mayor Suzak. So the lease, does the state regulate how much he can charge as the leasing to someone who wants to use that line? Or does he have, so is there any, it's interstate commerce, but is there any rules? Or can he basically charge what he wants to use that line?
Hi, this is Julie. Hopefully you can hear me now, I'm on my phone. The, we don't get involved with the business between the railroad and its customer. The only time we would get involved would be if they need permission to construct something on state property in order to get a spur track in to facilitate use on the line. So to answer your question, no, we would not get into the specific business deal between the railroad and the customer for hauling or for use of the line for freight.
Which makes sense. But again, why would, I guess, why would there be a scenario if there is, where we'd use taxpayer money to fix the line for the leasing? Is there, where does the state money come in to help? If we don't regulate what he charges, are we using any taxpayer money to fix that line?
As John pointed out before, only in very large, significant structures.
Which the bridge, which the bridge over the Scantic River, I think, would qualify.
Yes, but it's rated fair right now, so it's probably not one that we're going to be adding to our capital plan anytime soon.
Okay. And then I think, I'll just say, I think the conversation, I think it was you, Commissioner, that said, you know, you looked at what Simsberry did with a trail and what economic development happened there. You know, nice little small businesses, some of those things popped up around the line. And again, if you have a trail, I mean, I'm not against rail, where, as you said, we're trying to bring up the passenger line into Thompsonville. But again, if you do open up a rail, I mean, to sit there and, again, just people need to be upfront. It's, you open it up, it's going to be used. So maybe it starts one day a week, that's fine. And I'm not saying, I'm not, that's a business's prerogative to make money. And they can, but to sit there and say it's only going to be used one day a week for the next 25 years simply isn't true. And, you know, because again, if other businesses want to use that line, they're going to use that line, and it makes sense for them from an economic standpoint, which is fine. So then the question is for the town, really, what do you want to develop that rural area town? Would you like it's something along what you see in Simsberry? Or is it something along where you see in a more industrial-type situation where industrial-type businesses are going to use the rail? That's just, that's just the question the town has to answer. I mean, and that's fine. I mean, I think that's a fair question for people to answer. What do you want to see for development? I'm not against, I mean, trust me, I want to see jobs in town, but there's also, we have sections of town for that where that is. So I think that's what really the question is, what people want, what they want to see developed on that line? Is it more industrial-type use? Or is it more small business rural-type economic development? Because there is many phases of economic development that can be used, either with a trail or with a rail. And I think if you walk the line, I mean, I would love to see a trail with a rail, I mean, I'm okay with it. But if you go walk that line, and I recommend members of the DOT to do that, there ain't a whole lot of space there for 25 feet, you know, on many sections of that track for safety to have a trail and a rail. So I'm hoping that the DOT does its homework. Because again, this is an important subject for us. We waited 25 years to talk about this. And again, I got to admit, the fact that, you know, we should be having more public hearings on this because, again, if we lease, if we end up extending that lease, and, well, that determines development of that part of town for the next 20 years. And the town should have a say in it, in my opinion. And that's just my statement. Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Thanks, Mike. I guess I've kind of spread more off of what Councilor Angar and what you're saying. Do we know what the right-of-way is for that rail? Is it the 100 feet that we are seeing in certain portions of the map? Or is it the area?
It varies, and that's why it's important for the department to share the information concerning the railroad valuation maps with you or your consultants, so that then you know what the width of the right-of-way is at given locations all along the line.
Right, because 25 feet is, you know, that's a significant part of, you know, 100 feet. I mean, our largest roadway in Enfield is 100 feet, you know, and it's significant. But, you know, and as you may remember saying, I mean, this is going to change the full collection of that part of town. That railroad was there, nobody used it, it went dormant for 25 years. In that 25 years, different things have happened as far as residents have built that whole town. Here, it's significant, you know, to what happened when there was a supersede, non-use of the program. And, you know, you didn't see any repairs or anything going on on it for 24 years. We've led people into a situation where we really don't know what was going on. And I think a lot of this stuff has been there in the lightening that possibly, you know, understanding of the right-of-way and when they do those, and areas and, or do they have-
Donna, you're cutting it out, Donna.
Well, I'm sorry, Mike. So I guess I made my statement, and I guess, do they have to look at inland wetlands and any other regulatory agencies, or are they exempt from them?
I would, Commissioner, go ahead.
No, as part of the review, as part of this study or preliminary engineering review that would be performed, submitted to ConDOT, one, a section of it would have to deal with, obviously, environmental protection.
Technology. So, sorry, Commissioner, folks are cutting it out. I don't know if we'll let you have, we're at 7:05 or a little bit over. Would you like to, any closing statements, Commissioner?
No, I would say building a trail would require all the similar requirements that you would need to go too deep to get permits, and you need to go to Army Corps of Engineers, depending on if you need to get permits. Oh, did we lose the town council?
No, we're still here. We still see you, Garrett. Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
So just want to clarify that point, we would need to go through, just as we at the DOT, when we build a project, we have to go to DEEP and the Army Corps of Engineers is impacting wetlands. So that same standard apply. So appreciate the interest in this. We obviously understand the interests of the community. You know, we need a rail operator to maintain the line, but that doesn't preclude other things that the town wants to do in the vicinity or in the right-of-way. So the path laid out by Julie is one path forward. Looking at abandonment is another path forward. But, you know, just to reiterate, our job here at the DOT, we're property holders, but the Surface Transportation Board defines whether a railroad can or cannot be shut down. And by shut down, meaning abandoned, because as long as it's not abandoned, it's still considered an active railroad. So anytime a business wanted to start using it, they could. So that's the important thing to keep in mind.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much for you, you and your entire staff for being here. We appreciate it. And again, hopefully we'll be back in touch and have more conversations as we move forward.